Are you using your? When we.
Oh, so much.
You know, the condition. This declaration. Which is a. In this declaration, the property shall be. Okay, the conditions on this.
This. Actually was just. Oh, and that clock is. Slow. I will send an email right now.
The point is. With the conditions that apply. Twenty seven oh one State Road. Has it impacts our campus zone? Will those conditions be consistent throughout? Other campuses.
Twenty years.
Okay, I think.
Because, you know. Hospitals have been broken in, so to speak.
Right, understand that.
Yeah. Yes.
Here it is. The declarant struck no more than one hundred and fifty.
Weather squad.
So. One available in each campus zone. Yes, it's a text amendment.
My son played baseball, and that's why I was like all.
Here you worded that way.
He does definitely say that. That's the kind of thing. If you have enough space and you have a logical move.
There's something happening.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it wouldn't be a slam dunk.
How's Andy this evening?
I asked you about the priestly looking gentleman. You said he's.
Yes.
What is his name? That's right, you couldn't do it yesterday either.
The promotion and possibly for the first resigning.
I'll get his name, I'll get his name for you.
Because they're barring what we're doing with Michael Ryan.
It's on the tip of the.
Principal use. A mic is amending.
Valid email address.
Yellow, the shadow, crazy. But the lighting here is just crappy.
There's.
My favorite is still the one.
That was Tammy Mosman last night.
Yeah.
We had our fire commission meeting last night.
Can't think of his last name. He and his dad died on development.
Guys, you ready? We're early.
Yeah. That's seven.
Okay, yep. Andy, you ready?
Yep. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order and deliver an opening message. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply. And the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address and your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask you unmute your microphone. And after speaking, we ask you to please mute your microphone. Easthamfield Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes. Or follow the previous chat procedure discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of any non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first agenda item. I would ask that you would please rise, join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item up on the agenda will be a police swearing in, chief.
Good evening. Pat, could you stand up here? Or this is Paul Patrick, goes by Pat Solari. He's from Exton, PA. He's worked for the Westchester University Police Department since 2017. He holds a bachelor's degree from Newman University, which he obtained in 2014. And received his Act 120 certification from Delaware County Community College. Pat is a field training officer at Westchester as well as a TASER instructor. He plans on relocating to Lancaster County with his girlfriend, who has family roots here in Lancaster as well. And he's a welcome addition to the police department. Read your oath of office.
Please raise, raise your lightning and repeat after me. I, Patrick Solari, report.
I, Patrick Solari, report.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I.
That I.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Easthamville Township Police Department.
For Easthamville Township Police Department.
Will support.
Will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinance of Easthamville Township.
And the ordinance of Easthamville.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey. Enforce.
And enforce.
The law without.
The law without.
Consideration.
Consideration.
From individuals.
Individuals.
Race.
Race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
I will need your signature.
With the rest of the board, join me down.
Okay, up next, we have a hearing. A text amendment submitted by twenty seven oh one State Road to permit drive-through restaurants and drive-through and drive-in services by right as an accessory use in the campus zone. To increase the maximum building height of an accessory structure in the campus zone from forty-five to sixty feet. And to establish minimum front yard setbacks in the campus zone for accessory buildings which are greater than forty-five feet. At this point, I'm just going to turn things over to our solicitor to give a brief description on what's going to happen next.
Okay. As you're aware, you do have two hearings on your agenda this evening, so I'm going to give you one set of instructions that'll apply to both. This is a public hearing to take comments and presentations from the requesting party and from any interested persons. Who may be in attendance who are in favor or opposed to the proposal. I will note for the record that both hearings have been properly advertised through LNP. We'll begin by having the petitioner make a presentation and explain the reasons for the request and the terms of the proposed ordinance. The petitioner and any supporting individuals at testimony they wish to present will then be subject to questions from the board. After the boards had an opportunity to ask their questions, the petitioner, then the board will open the hearing to the public to receive public comment. This is not an opportunity for the public to be directing questions to the board, but rather to ask questions of the petitioner and/or make their own presentations for or against the proposal. After all, the public comment has been received, the board should then close the hearing. And in each case, you do have an ordinance before you this evening that is. Will be, it'll be up to you to decide whether you wish to proceed with adoption of that ordinance tonight or to table it to a future meeting. I will note that if significant changes are made to the proposed ordinances as a result of comments received in the hearing. The ordinance would then have to be referred back to the planning commissions and a subsequent public hearing would have to be held before the board.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Claudia Shank. I'm here this evening on behalf of twenty seven oh one State Road LLC. I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Eric. I'm joined here this evening by Mike O'Brien and Eric Scott, who are both here on behalf of the developer. We're before the board with a text amendment petition to amend the requirements of the campus zoning district. There are two changes proposed as part of our text amendment. The first would permit drive-through and drive-in services, for example, a bank or a pharmacy, as well as drive-through restaurants as accessory uses in the campus zoning district. The second would increase the maximum building height for accessory structures in the campus zone from forty-five feet to sixty feet. But would also require that any accessory buildings in excess of forty-five feet have a setback that is equal to the proposed building height. Dan, could you pull up the master plan? So I just want to start by reviewing with the board. The project that is the catalyst behind this text amendment, which you're all very familiar with. As you know, the developer Oak Tree has been engaged in the comprehensive master plan development of approximately one hundred acres. North of Harrisburg Pike and located on either side of State Road. What you have in front of you now is our current master plan for the project. This was recently resubmitted to the township, so you'll be seeing it again soon at one of your public meetings. The western portion of what we refer to as Brookside has been developed or is in the process of being developed with the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center facility, which is under construction now. Currently, we are working on development of the eastern portion of Brookside. This is a phased development of numerous uses that will be complementary to the hospital project. There's a Sheets Convenience Store that has been constructed and is currently operating. And there are two additional plans which have been submitted to the township and are in the review process now. One is for a fast casual restaurant and a bank, which would be immediately to the south of the Sheets. That bank is proposed to have a drive-through facilities. And the other plan is for one hundred and fifty multifamily dwelling units located on the eastern portion of the property adjacent to the floodplain improvements. In terms of future anticipated development, we are anticipating several medical office buildings, which are shown on this plan, but land development plans for those buildings has not been submitted at this time. I do think it's worthwhile to just provide a brief overview of the campus zoning district because it is unique as compared to some of the other zoning districts in your ordinance in a number of respects. The purpose of the campus zone is to create institutional campuses with a mix of uses that are complementary to a principal use. And the development standards are intentionally flexible to allow for a variety of different types of development. So uses within the campus zone are grouped into principal uses and accessory uses. Principal uses, a little different in this context than how you might normally conceive of that term, relate to the primary function, sort of the the main. Function of the campus zone. So in this particular situation, the hospital is sort of the anchor to this campus zoning district. And all of the other uses that are being constructed are really meant to be complementary to that use. There are a limited number of principal uses that are permitted in the campus zoning district, certain agricultural activities, hospitals and research facilities, which again is the anchor here. Assisted living and long-term care facilities, municipal uses, parks and recreation facilities, churches and schools. And then once a principal use is established, there are accessory uses that can be constructed on the site that are designed to supplement that principal use. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. And there are a variety of different types of accessory uses that are allowed, numerous different types of residential uses, including multifamily dwellings, town homes, personal care homes, dormitories. Business uses like convenience stores, banks, medical office buildings, restaurants, daycares, retail sales. Another unique feature of the campus zoning district is the master plan development requirement, and this is unique as compared to any other zoning districts in the township's zoning ordinance. As part of the planning process for any campus development, the developer has to submit. Master plan to the Township Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors that basically sets forth a vision for what the proposed development is going to look like and how the various uses are going to integrate and function with one another. The plan has to be updated at least every one, once every five years and more frequently if there are changes to the plan. The plan you're seeing in front of you is an updated plan from what we had initially submitted. Based on, on some changes to the, to the way the site's laid out. And the township is not able to issue any zoning permits or approved plans until that master plan has been submitted to the, to the Board of Supervisors. I do want to point out that one of the functions of the master plan is to demonstrate compliance with the township's comprehensive plan, and I think that we have done that here. And I do want to point out a few goals of the comprehensive plan that I, I think really underscore and support the text amendment that we're here to propose this evening. One of the land use goals in the comprehensive plan is to allow the market to best develop development practices in zoned areas, the township for that sort of development. So here, again, the trend towards building up rather than out, I think supports an additional building height for accessory buildings that allows the conservation of green space. It is what we're seeing in the market right now. Another goal is to provide a diverse mix of land uses, and we submit that we've done that in connection with this plan. And then I would point out land use goal number four, LU four in your comprehensive plan, is to allow for maximum build-out of development within the urban growth area and specifically to reduce maximum building area limitations. And once again, that is what we're seeking to do here, at least relative to the change to the maximum building height for accessory buildings. There's a number of different reasons why this text amendment is important to our project and to the coordinated development of the site as shown on the master plan. First, it would allow for drive-through facilities at the proposed bank, which is south of the Sheets. The bank again itself is a permitted use, but this would allow those drive-through facilities in connection with it. It would also allow the proposed multifamily apartment building to be five stories. Again, building up rather than out and retaining additional green space on the site. And finally, it would pave the way for the construction of the medical office buildings in the future. We do think that additional height for accessory buildings is going to be important when we go to construct those, those facilities. In part because the minimum floor heights within medical office buildings are often higher than, than typical buildings, and that's because of some of the equipment, specialized equipment that is in those buildings. We do understand that there's a concern about having too much residential development within the campus zone, the intent for it to be supplementary to and supportive of the principal use. So we have voluntarily recorded a restrictive covenant against the property, specifically thirty-five point two one acres, so the tax parcel where the multifamily dwelling building would be located. That would preclude any future apartments from being constructed on the site for a period of twenty years. It would allow skilled care, assisted living and dormitories if that was required to support the hospital, thinking in terms of if there were some kind of a training program for, for medical students or. Or nurses that needed that sort of housing. In terms of the impact of the text amendment on other campus zone properties, we think it will be very limited. I understand that the township engineer has submitted a map to the board that shows the other campus zone properties in the township. Most, if not all of them, have already been developed. And I think if you look at each of them individually, you can see there's really a limited potential for this to have much impact on any of those sites. So we're happy to answer any questions the board has, but we are respectfully asking you to adopt the text amendment this evening. I will note for the board that this has been considered both by the county and the township planning commission and both have recommended approval of the amendment.
Okay, gentlemen, on the board, are there any questions? Mr. LaFevre will start with you.
Very well. Egress. And access to the bank. If I can. Understand the graphic before us. It appears that that will be only from in-board, no, no. Highway permits off of State Road into that bank.
That's correct.
I also. I'm hearing that we would expect the office buildings. And other buildings that are in this plan, and I'm reading now in larger print, four stories. And as you said, four times fifteen, you're, you're looking at sixty feet for those buildings also. And I can see now that there is sufficient parking, which I couldn't see in the small plan. So those were my thoughts, the egress and that the traffic would need to exit by. Either using the right only out on Harrisburg or going down to the light below Sheets. The. One thing I am concerned about trying to understand in the declaration is there's the twenty-year provision. What happens after twenty years? Why isn't this perpetuity?
Yeah, typically, when we record these declarations, we don't do them in perpetuity simply because I review enough titles for properties to know that these things stick around, you know, sometimes for a hundred years or more. And I don't want to end up in a situation where a hundred years down the road, someone is looking at the title to this property and realizes that, you know. No one realized, but here's this declaration that's been recorded against it some time ago. So I like to limit them in term, just to make sure that we're not creating a situation in the future where the land is precluded from being meaningfully developed. And that's what we've, we've done in other circumstances. There's a declaration impacting this property, limiting where convenience stores can be located, and that, that one similarly has a twenty-year time limit.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Okay. Would the restrictions detailed in your declaration for your, your property on State Road, would those conditions apply to other campus areas in the same way?
No, just to this property.
Just, just to this property. Okay. Then my other comment has to do with the setbacks. I don't see anything about the setbacks in any of the documents that, that were sent over to us.
So it's in the ordinance, and this is a change that was made as a result of our discussion with the planning commission. And so it's not going to be specifically mentioned in the petition, but if you look at the ordinance itself, you will see that there is, and let me grab a copy of it here, there's a footnote. Relative to the setbacks, footnote number one, you should see it on the ordinance that applies both to principal buildings and accessory buildings.
Okay.
And so that was a request of the planning commission. It was also a recommendation of David Miller Associates that because now we would presumably have buildings in excess of forty-five feet. As accessory structures, that they would also be required to have that additional setback that the principal structures have in the front yard.
So the setback now is what?
Would be the height of the building.
The height of the building.
So if it's a sixty-foot building, you'd have a sixty-foot front yard setback.
Okay. All right, that's all I have right now, I believe.
I have none, Mr. Russell.
Just appreciate the covenant that you applied to the, the property and recognize that the past ones we approved in the township bill, when we accept them, have all been twenty years. So Lime Springs comes to mind recent, and Nardo are too, that also had twenty-year covenants placed on their resoning and text amendments, so thank you.
All I had was, I was just curious, where is, which is the front yard in, for these apartments? Is it Harrisburg Pike or is it something internal?
I believe it's Harrisburg Pike, that's how we've been looking at it.
Okay, so I think at this point, we will open it up to the audience. So we're going to start on this side of the room. We'll go with the first row. Anybody have any questions? Would you please come to the mic, state your name?
Douglas Rupp. That White House down at the end, is that going to be torn down and the land used? The White House at the very end, they took the wall down and they took some other stuff away. It's an old house. It's the only house in that area. Are they tearing that down? It's going to sit there or you need it.
So gentlemen, I, I hate to interrupt, but Mr. O'Brien, could you please come up and speak into the mic for us?
Sorry. We have no plans to take the building down. We've just started to do some work on the outside. We're about ready to contract to essentially restore the outside of the building. And that's going to happen probably in the next three or four months. So we, we've already talked to a contractor. We have pricing for it. We'll be coming in for building permits very shortly.
You're going to have planned to have people living in it.
I don't know that we're going to have a resident in there as per se initially. So we may actually, we're just trying to get it.
Appearance.
Appearance wise. Correct. So one of the things that we've considered is having it have some sort of public use.
Oh.
Since the, the it's the trails terminate there, there could be a trailhead kind of, of use, that, that sort of thing. So we're still considering those and we also, also possibly having somebody live there. So both of those will be considered.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is it, is it construction good? I mean, is it?
Oh, oh, it's very well built. We were surprised it has a circular sort of oval staircase in it. And it's perfectly plumb, which is very unusual for a house this age. You're welcome.
Anyone in the next row? Sure. Okay, you want to come up now or? Yep, let's.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Marinus. I'm an attorney at Russell Ruber. I represent a handful of the owners of properties on North Lawn Drive. And I myself am a East Hempfield Township resident at eight eighteen Silver Road. I would like to ask the board to, to reject the text amendment. And I want to make it clear that it's not at all because of this project. This seems like a great use of, of land. Rather, it is because the text amendment as presented will have effects on other campus zone properties throughout East Hempfield Township. And all of those aren't as big or as sort of malleable as the one along State Road. The problem with the text amendment is it allows an increase in height of accessory buildings by right and allows drive-through establishments by right. Means that this will not only happen here, but it could happen in any of these other properties. So what I suggest or recommend to the board is that they remove the by right part of this and replace it with something that gives the, the township a chance to, to check and make sure the use is appropriate. That could be a conditional use or a special exception with some conditions that make sure that a five foot, a five story apartment building really belongs in the campus residential zone in which it's going into, rather than just allowing it there with no chance to, no chance to determine whether it's appropriate. I'd like to bring up two issues. The first is that this is increasing and intensifying accessory uses in the campus district, not the primary uses. And so by doing that, you're really expanding the types of things and intensifying the types of things that go on in these campus residential zones. And the second I'd like to point out, and that's the handout I just gave you, was that despite Ms. Schenck's statement, I think there is potential for this to have a real negative impact in various places around the township. Again, this project along State Road is you know, a blank slate and planned out with nobody around it and highway around it. And what goes there doesn't work as well in some of the other campus zones. And eliminating the by right and making it a special exception, for example, allows it to go into places where it fits and allows the board to, or the township to hold back in places where they don't quite fit. First of all, the accessory uses, as Ms. Schenck said, this is for the development, the campus, the campus zone is for the development of institutional campuses. And the primary uses are all institutional uses. Their hospitals, their assisted living, long-term care, municipal. You're sitting in a campus, red campus zone right now, places of worship and schools. But the accessory uses aren't necessarily institutional uses. That allows multifamily, it allows convenience stores, it allows hotels and restaurants and retail sales, medical office buildings. And that's okay when it's a, a mix of the primary use and the accessory uses that, that support that, the primary use. But what this text amendment is doing, it's allowing the accessory uses to grow to the point where you, you could be concerned that it becomes a tail wagging the dog, that we're allowing more apartments. We're allowing more medical office buildings. As she said, that's the reason for the text amendment was to allow these things. But that's not the purpose of the campus zone. That's not the, the main institutional purpose. So I, I believe the board should be wary about increasing accessory uses when they are supposed to be incidental to the institutional use of the, the campus zone. The second concern I have is that again, a text amendment where some things available by right affects every campus zone district in the township. And all the campus zone districts in the township are not the same. I've given you a handout which I believe are all the campus zone districts, trying to take the information from the the county assessment map, when Lancaster General Hospital owns a lot of those properties along Good Drive is a little bit confusing. But I think I have, I have most of them there. And as you see that this district is along State Road is huge and it's not really surrounded by a lot of residential zone districts. That isn't the same for some of these other places. If you look at, you know, thirty fifty Marietta Drive is the Hempfield United Methodist Church Campus Zone District. This would allow somebody to put an apartment there by right of up to sixty feet. I'm not going to go through all these eighteen fifteen Marriott Avenue Church of the Apostles. Again, it's surrounded by low density residential areas. And this would allow a drive-through bank or restaurant and a five-story apartment building by right. And my, my clients you know, border Homestead Village that would allow a sixty-foot tall apartment building by right with no check from the, from the Board of Supervisors or zoning hearing board, no means for input from the residents that live there. And even though Ms. Schenck said all these places are developed, that's clearly not true because you have a seventy-eight foot apartment building for Homestead Village, sort of on the bottom of your pile of things to be reviewed soon. So, and a lot of these other churches or other places like that all have room for development. I and my clients aren't anti-development, but just need to do it in places that make sense. That's why having it by right doesn't make sense for all of those properties there. So we're asking that you make it by special exception, by conditional use, put some conditions on it. As Ms. Schenck said, and as you pointed out, there are deed restrictions on the state road property that protect the township and protect the around, the surrounding area. That isn't true on most of those other things on the list. And you don't have the advantage of saying, oh, you know, United Methodist Church, let's restrict where you can put an apartment building. If you pass this amendment as it's presented, you won't be able to do that. But if you pass, if you, if you go back and say these are allowed by special exception if the property is sixty acres or if it's serviced by an arterial road or if it's, you know, not already built up, you know, to fifty percent of impervious surface, you can still forward this project. But then you protect the people like Homestead Village, you protect the people around Roarstown and, and all those other places. Where putting something like this in by right really wouldn't be, wouldn't be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. So that's why we're asking you, you know, not to, not to, to sink this project, but just make the ordinance more malleable. So you can do what makes sense across the township and not just in, in some of these bigger parcels. Thank you.
Let her respond now.
I'd say I'd like to hear from you now while it's fresh.
Okay, so I'll try to take some of the points that Attorney Marina raised individually. So first, one of the contentions was that this use or the additional height for accessory buildings or drive-through facilities should be permitted by special exception or conditional use. As this board is well aware, this township has gone to great lengths to try to remove conditional uses from the zoning ordinance and just undertook a text amendment that, that did that and special exceptions as well to allow more uses to be permitted by right. So I would submit that to place additional restrictions on this type of a use would just subvert that goal. In addition, I'd submit that there are already some protections in place within the campus zone. As I reminded you during my initial presentation, there's the master plan development requirement. So before anything is built in the campus zone, a developer, an applicant has to come before the board and explain why that particular development makes sense in that location and how it's going to function and what its relationship is going to be to the institutional use. So I think there are already some protections in place that allow the board to have an opportunity to look at proposed development before a plan is submitted. In terms of specifically the concern about Homestead Village, which I understand is, is the catalyst behind the residents' opposition to this project, this text amendment does not affect that project in any way, shape or form. That's a principal use that's been proposed. It, as, as Attorney Marina said, a seventy-eight foot tall building. So it is not coming in under this proposed amendment. Principal buildings are already allowed by right up to ninety feet within the campus zoning district. Our amendment only impacts accessory buildings. So this is not have any bearing on, on that project. All of the uses that we're talking about here are uses that are already allowed. Multifamily dwellings are allowed, banks are allowed, drive or fast food restaurants, retail is allowed. So all that we're doing is increasing the building height and then again, allowing those drive-through facilities. Once again, provided that there's a relationship or connection to that institutional use. I think if you look at a map, the zoning map, which Attorney Marina shared, and I don't know Diane if you're able to pull up and look at these individual sites, all of them already are developed with a primary institutional use. I'm not saying that it is impossible for any development to occur on these sites. Certainly those issues could be demolished. Certainly there is some land, like in the case of Homestead Village, available for development. But if you look at these parcels individually, going from north to south, it's the Township Building, Amos Her Park is at the north of the site. Got Hempfield High School where Diane is hovering with the mouse. The Brookside Development, which is what we're here to talk about this evening. Centerville Middle School. Hempfield United Methodist Church. Woodcrest Villas and Lancaster General Hospital. St. Leo, the Great School. Roarstown Elementary School. And then Homestead Village. So all of these sites already have a primary institutional use that's occurring on them. Happy to answer any specific questions the board has.
Anyone from the board?
I thought I heard you mention thirty-three point one acres. What was that in reference to?
That is the deed restriction that we've recorded against our particular property to not allow any additional multifamily development. So that property, while it's roughly a hundred acres that's subject to the master plan, it's divided into a number of different tax parcels. So you've got the parcel that is owned by the hospital, which is west of State Road. And then you've got all the land east of State Road. You have the enterprise zoning, which is north of the floodplain. And then everything south of the floodplain. And more or less this restriction applies to all of the land south of the floodplain with the exception of sheets, which is under separate ownership. So we can only enter a declaration against land that we own.
Right, so that, that doesn't mean that this text amendment only applies to properties over that acreage. It still applies to every.
It does not.
Okay, I misunderstood.
I just, I'd like to clarify one thing too. I, I go to Hempfield United Methodist Church. It's fully developed. And we have no intention of adding a drive-through to our church, just for the record.
I think, I mean, as you mentioned, Ms. Schenck is, a restaurant would still be allowed there technically, but all we're talking about really is drive-through or not drive-through.
Correct.
Whereas that's one of the things, is the others, the height.
Thank you. Did you?
Just, just one thing, for the record, I'm not sure I heard Attorney Marina's say that, and the residents say that they opposed the project. Matter of fact, I thought they, they were supportive of what's going on on State Road. Their issue is with the text amendment and how it applies, correct?
Correct, I understand that.
Okay.
I'm Paul Calero, six oh two North Lawn Drive. And my property is affected by a change in the amendment. So I'm against it. I, I back up to Homestead Village. They have advertised and they have plans, detailed plans for a seventy-eight foot building, six stories, that will be ninety-five feet from my property line. And a perimeter road, which will be fifty feet from my property line. I will literally have to look like this to see the top of the building. And I brought two pictures to verify that. May I see one of the pictures, please? Here I am sitting on a chair on my back patio and that's my backyard. The pine tree that you see to the left of center, the top is hidden by that banner, is fifty-five feet tall and I measured it with a Bosch laser measuring device. The deciduous tree, which is a maple in the middle of the picture, is on Homestead Village's property. And I am certain that's going to come down because the perimeter road will be in that area. So literally this building will be taller than that pine tree. And that does impact me. It impacts not only my resale value, but I'm going to have building lights shining in my bedroom, increased traffic, increased noise, industrial air conditioning units. So I, I'm against the text amendment because it will allow this to happen, which impacts me severely. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Just want to clarify that this text amendment is not what will allow that development to happen. That development is already permitted under your ordinance. You're permitted to have a principal structure up to ninety feet tall.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is John Afuoso at six fourteen North Lawn Drive. My property also backs up to the Homestead Village property. And my feeling is that a text amendment would allow development of, on any campus, campus zone property up to sixty feet for accessory structure. While the building that they're proposing is being labeled as a primary use, it's an apartment building. I think we may need to look into that and see if that's actually a primary use for a accessory use building. So that, that argument will be happening, happening probably at a later date. However, it seems it would be most it seems it would be most appropriate to, you know, for this project to ask for special circumstance or an ordinance to allow that particular project to go on without affecting every other campus zone throughout the township. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on this side of the room that wishes to make a comment or have questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to the right side of the room. Anyone in the first row? Second row? Anyone in that last row? Is there anyone on Zoom? So at this point, I guess we can deliberate, have some discussion about it.
Yeah, I mean, unless anyone has any, on the board has any other further questions for.
I have one more question for Claudia.
Okay.
Give me a moment. Let's wait to deliberate.
You want to ask it now?
Well, for, not to put you in the spot, Ms. Shank. But I wanted to kind of go over a little bit, ask you a little questions about conditional uses in general, just to clear the air about what we control, we really have as a board. It's kind of a laser-like question because not too long ago, we were on opposing sides of a lawsuit over a conditional use that we denied a project that we thought at that time had some, and I still thought that had some safety issues and some other things. But ultimately, we lost. And it became our board's impression that from a conditional use perspective, it's almost impossible to deny land development in the conditional use process. It has to be almost a flagrant violation of the, of the ordinances and non-compliance of the ordinances. There's a misperception that it seems like that if we put something into conditional use, all of a sudden we got the ability to deny and, and do this. Could you give me your experience on conditional uses from a developer's perspective?
Sure. So conditional uses and special exceptions are really very similar, but conditional uses are what would come before this board. And generally, they consist of having some specific criteria that an applicant has to meet. And if they meet those criteria that are set forth in the ordinance, the board has to approve the conditional use. So I think there's a misconception that there's some degree of discretion that the board has, unless the project is going to have impacts that would be different than other similar types of uses. For example, if you had an apartment building by conditional use, if the criteria were met, the board would have to approve the project unless someone could come in and show, no, this is an exceptional apartment building, which is going to generate much more traffic than what would be typically seen or something along those lines. So there really isn't as much discretion with those kinds of approvals as what you might ordinarily think. What it really does do is slow down the process. It makes it take longer for these types of developments to occur, can result in litigation. And in fact, the County Planning Commission has recommended that more uses be permitted by right and that we try to get away from some of those additional processes to simplify zoning, which is their initiative.
Which we learned in that process too, of figuring out conditional use for the record. So, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Me up again.
My comments will need to be reserved for the Homestead Village matter, I believe. They would not be appropriate in this, in this discussion. I've heard the case and understand it.
And, and I just want to be sure in my mind, we're talking about primary use versus accessory use in the, in, in these two, two, two projects. State Road is an accessory use, correct? And what's going on for these residents is a primary use, correct?
So we're really not getting into land development? It's really a text amendment that we're looking at? And we're, in my view, what we're doing is we're changing the ordinance to affect all of the campus zone, allowing the drive-throughs and increasing the height and increasing the setback. So we're not looking at, but, you know, to answer your question, I think it was stated that whatever was submitted for Homestead, what they're contending it was a principal use.
I, I would speak to something that is relevant here, and that is in my twenty-odd years in this township in planning, I've always been driven by compatible uses. And this site has its standalone merits that doesn't come to play in that. But by agreeing to this text amendment, as Attorney Moreno's has asserted, we do allow for a more broad interpretation, in my words, of what it means. And I, the question would be, and I reserve this for the Homestead Village matter, which is forthcoming, I'm sure, would the residences been built along North Lawn? If that ninety-foot, seventy-eight-foot, whatever, building were there first? And I think the answer is no. The answer is very clear. And so now, to allow something of that height where it has that negative effect upon those properties, set aside the value of the properties, it's the intent, intent, intrinsic value to those residents of their home.
So Ms. LaFever, I would just.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'll save that for Homestead, but I, this text amendment will have some bearing on that. And so in that case, I just felt necessary to express that. Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Yep.
Mr. Weaver? I have nothing further at this point. Are we going to close the hearing?
I would, I would close the hearing, take, take a vote to close the hearing and then you can decide. You do have it as an action item further down on your agenda. You can take action on it tonight or you can defer it to another meeting.
So do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously to close the hearing. Thank you. Up next, we have another hearing. Rezoning submitted by and for twenty-three fifty-two Marietta Avenue, proposing rezoning this parcel from low-density residential to medium-density residential.
Good evening. My name's Riley Notzall. I'm an attorney at Barley Snyder. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Marietta LLC. With me this evening is Mike Hucksta with the LA Group and Don Herman, who's representing the applicant. The property in question that is proposed to be rezoned is two five three two Marietta Avenue. It's actually located north of US Route thirty and south of Route twenty-three Marietta Avenue. It's kind of wedged in between those two highways. And there's an overpass over Route thirty that kind of adjoins the property. It's a triangular shape, kind of an odd shape. And currently, there's a single-family residence. It's a converted barn structure and an accessory pole building on the property. We're proposing, this property is currently zoned low-density residential. The proposal is to rezone it to medium-density residential. We've set forth in our rezoning petition, a sketch plan of what rezoning this to medium-density residential could permit. The applicant's prepared to proceed with that sketch plan, assuming the rezoning occurs this evening. In the petition, and tonight I'll just kind of review sort of why we think this rezoning makes sense for this property. It's, it's along a major corridor. It's within the urban growth area designated on the county comprehensive plan. There's medium-density residentially zoned properties directly across Route thirty, which is where the Lime Spring Village development's occurring with townhome developments. It's also sort of in a combination of a commercial slash residential corridor. So nearby uses include Christ the King Church, Hope Born in Christ Church, general floor, office basics and AIN plastics. So while there are some low-density residential properties nearby, there's also several commercial and institution, institutional properties near, nearby as well. At its main meeting, the Township Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning and the County Planning Commission also recommended approval of this rezoning. And we would just point out that, you know, the low-density residential district already permits several types of single-family dwellings. This rezoning would permit additional types of single-family dwellings, including townhomes and duplex-style apartment housing and higher-density types of housing. But the, the thought is that this is consistent with the development of the surrounding area and it's compatible with adjacent uses. So with that, we, we'd offer to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. LaFever?
None, thank you. I don't have any at this time.
Mr. Russell?
I think I'm probably been on the board the longest and I was involved with both the rezonings on either side of this track. With the Lime Springs, with Mike O'Brien, who's in the audience right now, and with the Nardo Track, which is on the other side of the church. Little history with the, both those rezonings, they were both ag-holding. And ag-holding is land that's designated for development. This is actually the first time we've had R1 rezoning come before the board, and I'm aware of the whole time I've been on the board for twelve years now. So this is actually a first where I'm aware for our board to actually be facing an R1 zoning. Most of our rezonings over the years have been industrial, the commercial, commercials, industrial or ag-holding. And they've been a lot larger lots. For the Lime Springs, there was a master plan that had been created, just like the one that was talked about tonight. There was an act, a covenant agreement that was placed upon the property, which limited some of the things that could be done on the property. For Nardo Track, there was detailed engineering drawings about what was going to be built on the property. And there was also a covenant that was placed on there that limited what could be done on that property. And made very clear to the board what was, what occur and not occur. I have concerns with this one because when we've talked about medium-density dislocation, we're talking up to thirty units at that location when you're talking about almost five acres by zoning. And as we were just talking about with the last hearing, when you make a change, it doesn't matter what you have in plan in front of you or what's proposed, anything can go there. So that site doesn't work for those type of uses. It'd be very cost-effective to throw a building up at that location too. And so those are concerns I have with what the application is. I'm not against what is in front of me for the sketch. But I do have concerns about the rezoning. And so I just wanted to give you a little history on what occurred with the other two properties on either side. They had a common theme with it, about something that had been voluntarily offered. But I have concerns with this one because technically by the books, you could just put one building up there and you could put thirty units in. And it could be apartments, multi-story. That's all I got.
All right, I'm looking through the zoning ordinance right now, but I'm going to ask what sounds like a dumb question, and maybe it is, but we're the proposals to go from residential layer to residential median, which sounds like we're increasing the density. But are we really increasing it? And if so, by how much? I mean, what is the impact? I see residential lows, three units per acre. I'm just I just saw residential low is for single-family, three dwelling units per acre. I'm just wondering what it is for residential median.
I believe by conditional use, it's up to six.
I didn't think we had anything that high, but.
I believe it allows multifamily up to six.
Five dwellings per acre.
Four, okay. Well, it goes from three to four, so. I see four there. Oh, multifamily is five, okay. So yeah, there's, there is an impact. I mean, I guess my, I'm right beside Route thirty, so I don't think it can be that terrible to have higher density there, but the only thing I was curious is going to be access to get in and out of there. There's really only one place to do that. I think that'll be an issue for land development and not for what we're looking at here. But I think that's something we'll have to consider.
The, the applicant would be taking the sketch plan through the land development process, so there would be opportunity to sort of discuss those issues as part of it. And I would mention that, you know, you mentioned some of the differences with density, but any types of developments like that would still have to go through land development approval. And, and cluster developments are permitted in both districts.
I see that, six.
But the cluster and the R1, don't you have to be greater? I don't think you qualify acreage-wise.
Yeah, that may be the case. We only looked at that briefly. And that was sort of one of the issues is the, the way this property is shaped and also because of the rights of way for Marietta Avenue and Route thirty, it's actually quite small in terms of net acreage as opposed to what the total acreage is when you include the rights of way, but just based on net acreage, it's, it's pretty small.
Mrs. Garber, if you could bring up the proposed sketch plan that was submitted or is in our packet. There's a detail, and one of the points raised when this first came before the board was dual access or emergency access. And there is a provision, and you need to see it in large scale or blow it up, from the driveway that goes to the existing residence property on the site. It shows a connection there for emergency access. So they did, they did comply or, or offer that.
I would say, for me, I I'm, I'm not against the proposal. I've reviewed the sketch plan. It is a little more aggressive than I think what was initially talked about when we met at planning as far as number of units. I think I could live with that, but I echo Mr. Russell's concern when he spoke about what was done in the past and being consistent. Any thoughts?
I mean, I think that this type of rezoning is consistent with the development of the surrounding area. The fact that there's RM right across Route thirty and just the topography and overall characteristics of this site, it kind of makes sense for, for this type of rezoning. Otherwise, you're kind of limited to just single-family or duplex-style housing. And due to the site constraints, it's a little hard to construct those types of housing on this property.
And I think what Mr. Russell kind of was, was getting at is, I don't think we disagree with that, but things change over time and once it's rezoned, it's rezoned.
Mr. Herman could speak more to that, but he has no intentions of selling this. If that's sort of the concern, it's in an LLC that's intended for this property to be passed down to his children. So it's sort of like, it's intended to be held by the family. I don't know, Don, if you want to say a few words about that.
Don Herman, yeah. It's our intent to change the initial design. We're going through the budget process right now. Understand your concern. I, I would think maybe we could discuss that and come up with something that might make it more amenable to you guys. You had mentioned things like deed restrictions and a more comprehensive plan, perhaps, or something we can do that way.
Of course, that would be voluntarily offered. We are not requesting that, but just, that's happened to be just what your neighbors did on either side of you, so.
Yeah, let us take it under advisement and kick it around a little bit and we can get back to you.
This, should we continue it?
Well, I, I would proceed with your hearing and continue to, you know, ask your questions and then open it up for public comment.
Do we have any more questions from the board?
No, nope.
Do we have any questions from the audience? Any questions from Zoom?
So is the intent, would you prefer to keep the case, the hearing open and continue it?
I think so. If I heard the applicant correctly, he was going to come back and bring us a little more information.
Okay.
Is there a motion to continue the hearing? Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Continue for two weeks until June fifteenth. Is that enough time?
Why don't we continue it at least for thirty days to get?
Yeah, it will not be at the June fifteenth meeting, so. I have a scout commitment. I'll be in that place at trail at that point.
I'm hoping to be back, but I'm going to be out of the country right around that time as well.
Your next, your next meeting will be the second July meeting. There is no first.
So would that be forty-five days?
Darn close.
Very close, yes.
You want to amend your motion to continue this hearing till our July meeting, which would be forty-five, within forty-five days.
July what?
It's going to be more than 45 days. Not until, I believe we have until after we close the hearing. Hearing is
Forty-six days, I think.
We don't have any time issues continuing the hearing.
I mean, really, I'd leave it up to the petitioner. Do you want two weeks or you want to go until July 20th?
We're okay going until July 20th, just to accommodate scheduling and holidays and vacations.
It might be prudent given I'm definitely not going to be at the meeting and if the chairman's not the meeting and one other person gets sick, we don't have a quorum.
So that'll give us enough time to kind of discuss internally and come back to you with a proposal.
So you find
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Work with staff and
Okay, so we're going to have continuance to our July 20th meeting. Motion by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have our consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of basic routine items. Everybody had a chance to review it. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
To raise the minutes. Otherwise, I'll move for approval of the consent agenda.
Can we, do you want to discuss the minutes?
Yeah, I just saw on pickleball, page three, middle of the page, it just, when I read through the first time, it wasn't clear whether the May 4th mission was to keep, to move the pickleball courts or or to keep them in place. It's just, I was just requesting some clarification on which mission did what on May 4th and April 6th? As far as keeping the pickleball play where it is or moving it. I discussed it with the township manager and she would be willing to clarify it.
So the statement in question is, he reviewed the unanimous decision made at the May 4th, 22 meeting to rescind the motion from April 6th, which keeps pickleball play where it is. So in response to that, simply just spelling it out more clearly. He reviewed the April 6th board motion, which was to switch the tennis and pickleball uses followed, followed by the May 4th motion, which rescinded the April motion. This resulted in the decision to have no change to the location of pickleball play.
Yeah, something like that.
Something like that.
So that's going to be changed and it's going to cross out, starting where he reviewed and end at?
That sentence.
Okay. So we just replace that sentence and that's it. Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that change. Any other discussion on that one?
No.
Okay. So any other discussion on any other items on the consent agenda?
I will be abstaining due to some invoices.
So Mr. Weaver, I'm going to ask that you make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that were read to the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Weaver, second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And any opposed, motion carries for 01. Okay, action items, we have the State Road text amendment, adoption, consideration of ordinance 2022-10. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2022-10 to permit drive-through restaurants and drive-through and drive-through in services by right of accessory uses in the campus zone to increase the maximum billing height of accessory structure in the campus zone from 45 feet to 60 feet and to establish a main front yard setback in the campus zone for accessory buildings, which are greater than 45 feet in height.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We've continued the Marietta Avenue rezoning ordinance. Harrisburg Pike, Harrisburg Pike Properties. Mrs. White, sir?
So the board, gosh, I can't remember. Oh, the board heard some review for the property at Always Never Done and discovered that there was an error in the rezoning done in 2014, which resoned that property to residential. It's always been a business and what they, what the board asked the staff to do is to look at other properties along Harrisburg Pike and consider rezoning those properties to community business center. What I'm showing you tonight is the map that was prepared by DMA, which includes those properties to see if that is what you were interested in doing and then staff can move forward with the process.
Yeah, I would say generally, yes. Yes, for me.
I'd agree.
Yeah, that wasn't the intent, that zoning ordinance change to actually rezone properties.
Who was the chairman that approved that?
That wasn't me.
And staff will move forward. There's really no action you need to take. I just wanted some consensus that we were on the right track.
Okay, so we don't need a motion or?
You don't, no.
And I'm assuming that we're going to be contacting those owners to give them a heads up as well?
Yes.
The AT&amp;P T orphan land track.
So this property, AT&amp;T approached the township to see if we would be interested in buying the property. We indicated we were not. They then came back to us and asked if we'd be willing to accept it for a dollar in closing costs. This property is an orphan track. The AT&amp;P T property is actually on the west side of Good Drive. And then the orphan track, which is highlighted in yellow, is on the eastern side. It's, it's a very odd shaped lot. It really has no value. And the board at that time was allowed the staff to move forward and have our attorney prepare the documents necessary, which have been done. And you have before you a resolution that authorizes the purchase for $1.
Who's been maintaining it?
AT&amp;T.
They've been mowing it? So now the only downside is we're going to be having to mow it now.
That's correct.
Well, I think it's worthwhile, especially with, you know, what's going to be happening in the future, so.
Close to the park too, right? I mean,
Yeah, it is close to Noldorot Park, which is at the top half of your screen there.
It's also close to the intersection if we do improvements, so it's good to have right away. Could be a detention basin someday.
Yeah, it's a good point. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-20 to authorize the acquisition of fee simple interest in certain unimproved real estate located at the intersection of Marietta Avenue and Good Drive? And to authorize the execution of all documents and papers and the talking, and the taking of all actions required and necessary to effectuate the same.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Route 72 and Littit Road interim improvement submission depend not to authorize a temporary signal at this intersection and financial commitment to complete.
So the township took it upon themselves to look at the interim improvements to this intersection, given the incidents that have occurred earlier this year. We determined that the, our traffic engineer determined that the intersection does meet warrants for a temporary traffic signal. This is just an interim solution. The permanent solution is a PennDOT solution, which is probably about five years away. So what you're authorizing tonight is to accept the financial responsibility to put that signal in, which is approximately 175,000. We are seeking state funding for that, so it may not all be on the township, but we want to get the process moving forward. McMahon Associates has prepared the recommendation and the documentation is ready to submit to PennDOT. PennDOT is expecting it. This was discussed at a committee meeting a few months back, also reviewed by the Public Works Committee. So it's been fully vetted and it's ready for your action.
And it'll be discussed at ties tomorrow.
Yes, well, yes.
On the funding part of it.
Right.
So we will be pushing the county MPO to find a way to help fund at least some of the the projects and this is the top intersection in the county right now.
Yes.
And they've done actually a pretty good job with everything else up to this point with the project. They're really trying to address the safety issues.
Any other discussion? Any questions from the audience?
I guess the only question I'd have, would any of the funds that we, excess funds that we appear to would be having available on Farmingdale Road, could, could it be used for this?
No.
No. Okay.
So I do think we will have an upcoming meeting where we can take a look at all of these projects that have been talked about and have an open dialogue and prioritize them.
And we did, and that mean we did have this signal on there too, as one of our, one of our anticipated costs.
Yes.
And every one of these road projects, we are trying to seek grant monies and other things as well as the stormwater projects too, so. While the numbers daunting, there are some ways to soften the numbers.
Any questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion? For the interim improvements and submission depend not to authorize a temporary signal at this intersection and financial commitment to complete. Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, Elizabeth Graham to be appointed as zoning officer and assistant stormwater officer.
So before we do that, I'd like to introduce you to Elizabeth or Beth Graham. She has just completed her second day of work. And she's agreed to come meet the board. We have started this practice since hiring full-time staff, having them come to the board meeting, see what we're all about, so that you can be introduced to them. So Elizabeth is back there. She hails from between Middletown and E-Town. She is a graduate of E-Town High School. She has experience, miniscule work experience with Conalago and London Dairy Township. And she is going to be our full-time zoning officer, should you appoint her. The other person while we're talking is, next to her is Tanya Harding, I'm Harding. New, new last name. Tanya Hellman? In case you want to change. At least I got the first name right.
She skews away from you, so.
She lives outside of Columbia. She is a graduate of Hemphill High School and attended Harrisburg Gary Community College. She worked for CS Datum, which is the company that handles our permit managing software. So she is coming to us very familiar with how municipal work goes and how our permitting software is handled. She is a part-time employee and she is a planning admin assistant. So no reason to appoint other than to introduce you to her. And that's all I have.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on board.
All right, so is there a motion to appoint Elizabeth Graham as the township zoning officer and assistant stormwater officer?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
And so far, she's excited to come to work. They both are, actually. The next action you have is for Nathan Sturgis. Nathan has been appointed the township planner. And so is relinquishing his duties as the zoning officer, so there's a little bit of appointments necessary.
Is there a motion to appoint Nathaniel Sturgis as the township stormwater officer and assistant zoning officer?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving right along the leaf pickup.
So we had to bid our leaf contract this year. It's a three-year contract with various increases in costs, covers 22, 23, and 24. This is the same company that we have had for probably the last 20 years. They do a great job for us. They know the township. And I'd like authorization to sign the contract.
One little sidebar for this group, it was maybe two or three years ago, one of my neighbors, she was in like her late 80s and she was starting to have some dementia and she was struggling to get her leaves up there. And the crew basically stopped and they blew her yard out for her. And then they moved on with their, on the next job. So I just, I got a soft spot in my heart for these guys. These guys have done a good job over the years.
Appreciate what they do. Any other discussion on this? Is there a motion to award a three-year contract 2022, 2023, and 2024 to LY Services Group LLC for leaf pickup in the township?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. PPNL reimbursement agreement.
This is one of the reimbursement agreements that we are going to have to approve in connection with the Centerville Road project. It's PPNL, a pretty extensive contract. They have to move their poles back to allow the widening to occur. The cost that they have estimated this is just over 1.5 million. We are responsible for 35.29% of that cost because those poles are outside, outside of the right of way. And we're asking them to move them. So this, this contract says that we will reimburse them for this cost and this is part of the overall construction process.
So we're responsible for 35% of that 1.5 million?
Yes.
And that's part of the 3.5 that we estimate we still have left for the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, even though I don't like it.
Unfortunately, PPL poles are one of the most expensive utilities to deal with now. 25,000 a pole typically anymore. Everyone's worse than Sam Trek.
Any other discussion on this? Questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize the signature on the PPNL utility reimbursement agreement for work associated with the Centerville Road widening project?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Traffic engineer selection process.
So we talked about this at a prior meeting. We are seeking a qualified traffic engineer to help us through federal funded projects. We had done this about 11 years ago and hired McCormick Taylor, who is currently completing the Old Wars Town Road project for us. We'd like to do this again, given the number of federal projects we have coming up. What you are approving is the adoption of Appendix 7A, which is the policies and procedures that PennDOT has laid out to get this accomplished.
This is another funding strategy for the over $5 million infrastructure costs that we got. So this is why we did that years ago with McCormick Taylor. And we got four or five projects on the MPO for funding projects in the township, so it's the same concept.
It is laid out also that at some point It is laid out also that at some point in time, I'm going to be seeking two supervisors to serve on that committee to review the applications as they come in.
And also just, I will be having a written conflict of interest statement that I'll be publishing too for this, just to go on the record, because I would assume that my firm will be applying for it too. And then once the, if they do so, then I will be stepping away from the discussions, although I will still be attending the meetings. I just will not be participating in the discussions.
Any other discussion? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-one, which outlines and adopts PennDOT policies and procedures to select a PennDOT qualified traffic engineer?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Public comment? Would anybody like to comment, address the board? Go ahead.
My name is Mary Bollinger. I'm at two thirty-two South Homestead Drive. This will be easy, guys. Not complicated. I'm one of the gardeners out there on the plots. And I understand the plots are targeted to be moved to the Nistley Track across from Turkey Hill due to campus security issues or something. I don't know what the background was. I have two questions. One, was there any consideration for the gardeners to access the current space by the west gate by the apartments? Which I know now is padlocked, but I thought there might be some.
Sure, so.
That wasn't evident in the minutes, and I don't know if that was considered or not.
So we, we, and when that project was approved, it was originally intended that they provide access to the park from that entrance. There's a deed restriction on, on park ground that requires that the park can only be used for recreation, those types of facilities. The neighbors in the area of the apartment had taken us to court and actually won. And essentially, the judge's ruling was requiring that to be in access violated the deed restriction that's on the park ground now.
Oh.
So we cannot, unfortunately, that would, would be a great opportunity, but no.
Gardeners were talking about it, didn't know what the background was.
There's, there's a court settlement, basically, that's, that will only be emergency access and pedestrian. That you currently see, that's why it's gated.
Okay, okay, that was one question, that was one question. The second question is, when we moved to Nistley Road, how will the water be addressed? Water issue.
Same as it is now.
Public Works.
Public Works.
I don't know. We go over and talk to them all the time.
There'll be a large toter filled, like you have now.
Be back and forth? Okay.
Yep.
That was, that was there.
And there is water there, but the water will be to use to fill up that container.
Correct.
We're not going to have an open spigot at that location, but because of the house that was there, we're supposed to have a water source to that location.
Oh, there's a water source right there.
That was why, one of the things that was picking it. But what's going to happen is that container is going to get filled. It's not going to be, we're not going to have a spigot where people can put hoses and stuff up to it.
You can't, okay, that, that's.
Because otherwise, we're going to have somebody run, leave it running or something like that, and others. Issues. Correct me if I'm wrong with that, Ms. Swy. Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it'll actually be a better site too, when it's all said and done. It's going to be nice, nice parking. It's going to be, you have no other conflicting uses. It's basically an open field around it. We have a water source that's close by. It makes it a lot easier for the public works staff. So I think it's, it'll be a really good location when it's all kind of gets set up.
Yeah, and only, I, I, I got very little feedback. I solicited some of the feedback from all of the thirty, the other twenty-nine. And it was not a big issue, just a little disappointment and what, why, and what was going, you know, how that happened. And some, I, I just, two people were like, oh, my gosh, I gotta start all over again. But that was fine.
We tried to do it at the end of the growing season too. That's where we're going, where we held off. We actually wanted to move this earlier than this, but we wanted, we wanted to be cognizant of the growing season and stuff like that too. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, anybody from Zoom? Okay. Managers report.
So you, you took care of Centerville Roads business tonight with the PPNL agreement. You'll see some more of those as time moves forward. At this point, we're still looking at a July fourteenth let date, but I'm, I'm feeling that that's not going to happen. Church Street is kind of in limbo land. There's, there's no action being taken there. Still working through, as I assume, the UGI clearances. Old Worristown Road Bridge Project, that's been bid. We have a contractor, we have an inspector. I anticipate that the contract signing will happen shortly and then a notice to proceed in August. Farmingdale Road, we're still, everything's been submitted to PennDOT. We're still waiting for comments back. As soon as we get those back, that can go out for bid and we can move forward on that project. Nothing new on the Dairy Road Bridge. Still working through some of those documentations for the grand awards that we received. The Good Drive and Knoll Drive Lead Pedestrian Signal has been approved by PennDOT. So that's going to be, if it's not already, it will be installed by CMHi or our contractor, which will make those people very happy.
We're going to let Woodcrest know that we've actually listened to their concerns on that one.
We actually saw him today and we did.
Okay.
Working Lands, the Manned Stream Restoration Project, that's the project around the Mercedes dealership commercial Route seventy-two and Route seven forty-one. They are going after additional grant monies, Growing Greener, the CFA money and the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, so we'll be hearing a lot from them. They hope to have a start date of July or twenty-twenty-three, which is pretty aggressive. I don't know that they're going to get that far. Little Conestoga Creek Trail, that is the, the Steiman Foundation project. Staff met with them, foundation representatives. We discussed the West Roseville Trail. We also discussed having Knoll Door as a trailhead for the trail. And then we had some very general discussion on how we can terminate or not terminate the trail at the end of the Mercy Access Point at Schwerner Station Road. I'm also working through the second MOU dealing with the MS four credits. That's being reviewed by all four municipalities. That's going to be some time until that's actually before you for consideration. The Lidl issues that remain after their construction, which was the light at Lowe's, their new light, and also the access from Columbia Avenue. The light at Lowe's, we have their engineer looking at the timing of that to see if the green light, left turn in green light can be reworked, that it actually triggers more readily than it does now. And then we also have the access on Columbia Avenue. Levee was not interested in getting rid of that. That would be a fight. So we have our traffic engineer working with PennDOT, reaching out to them to see if they'd be willing to have a through, have Columbia Avenue go through as a through road, as opposed to a right-hand turn lane, which would add capacity to that intersection. So that's a project we're working through.
That's kind of like what we're doing Marietta at Centerville with the CVS. Is that what we're talking about there?
Yes.
So that's same, okay.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about for the effects.
Yes. Yeah, the, the dedicated right will go away and the phasing of that light will go away for the right turn and it will be a through, straight through lane with availability to, to right turn. PennDOT seemed interested in that the last time we spoke to them.
That would require a new lane all the way up to Worristown Road.
No.
No?
We can utilize the lane that's there. There's a receiving lane on the other side of the intersection. So it would just take, eradicating the lines for the Lidl access on Columbia.
But then that has to merge back into the.
I think that goes all the way up.
And that goes all the way that, from that block, from Good Drive all the way to Worristown Road is actually two lanes in that direction.
Okay, it seems logical.
Yeah, so hopefully that'll work out for us. We talked about the rezoning of the properties. The golf course and the Hark Stream Bank project, that's currently under survey work from DMA. We have the grants applications submitted. We're just waiting to hear. That's an eight hundred and thousand dollar project that we're hoping for some funding for. The Stony Battery Trail Project, DMA has met with representatives from six hundred, six oh one, seven oh one, and seven ninety-one to coordinate all the efforts and to make sure the trail flows the way it's supposed to around some of the various obstacles and utilities that are already at, at that, those locations. KRM has completed the design. I need to check with them to see where they stand and what is necessary from them. And DMA has also talked to, is going to be doing survey work at the TE Connectivity, which is the access and easement that we have to obtain from them. We don't actually have that. And then I need to reach out to West Hemphill Township to talk to them about the shortcut that currently exists between Stony Battery and Kaufman to turn that into a trail space instead of a roadway. When we initially talked to them about it, they were interested and willing. We just need to get something more official from them. The Penn State Hospital is, is on the downward track. The township inspectors and code administrators hope to complete their work by Friday and they should be able to issue a certificate of use of occupancy so that they can start loading the building. Group reports, we had Public Works. We discussed the McMahon Associates' recommendation for the interim improvements to seventy-two and Lititz. They talked about what the warrants were. The new signal again was about one hundred and seventy-five thousand. And we're moving, as you, you agreed to, we're moving through the PennDOT process for that. And also seeking funding. We also submitted two notice of interest forms to the MPO for the Connects twenty forty implementation program funding. That will be discussed also at Ties tomorrow. One is for the intersection of Stony Battery and Marietta Improvements. And the other one is to complete a construction plan. We modified that a bit for safe pedestrian bikeways in Landisville between Elmwood and Broad Street. So that's just the initial process to get those interest forms in. And after that, there will be an application process. And then finance met. We discussed the status of the financial software. Staff is continuing to meet with vendors and hopefully we'll have a recommendation to you soon for that purchase. We also presented them with a draft of projected cash flow spreadsheet. That is what Scott was talking about. It lists all the projects, what the status is, what the costs are, what the grant status is. That has to be, has a little bit of tweaking to it. And we are hoping to present that to the Board of Supervisors at a public meeting to be held on July thirteenth at two thirty in the afternoon. The Recreation Authority met. They are moving towards agreements that will provide them more autonomy, which is the direction that the Rec Authority wanted to go and the board desires. They also discussed the rezoning potential for the corner of Church and Stony Battery. We're developing a public message for the Recreation Authority, inviting people to attend their next, their July and their June board meetings to discuss with those present the purposes of the Recreation Authority, the reason for the rezoning, and what their ideas and what our ideas are in terms of use for that, that area. Good news is all the golf, new golf courts have arrived and are fully functional and working, so that's a positive. And planning reports, we have two conditional uses that you will be hearing at your June fifteenth meeting. The Lititz Road LLC, which is Root Road at Lititz Road, that's for a solar array, a solar farm. It's on four acres, four acres of forty-six acres and the land is currently ag zone. The, the second one is for the Panatoni Development Company, which is the four oh three South Chickies, the warehouse, to permit an industrial heavy use in the enterprise zone. So I, I know you mentioned that there was a couple of board members that won't be at the June fifteenth meeting.
I believe I will be. I'm just being cautious in case with the way the restrictions are and stuff.
Because those conditional uses will be advertised for the fifteenth.
I will definitely be missing. I will be in, in, coming off the Appalachia Trail and will be driving home late that night. There's a bunch of scouts.
Believe no matter what, I would be able to attend by Zoom.
Okay. Okay.
And I won't be able to.
Yeah. And I'm assuming all the, the rest of the board member will be planning on attending the June fifteenth meeting.
I'll try to remember.
That concludes my report unless there's questions.
Just add that we did have an executive session at our last meeting. It was to discuss a personnel matter.
Yeah, I think that was actually noted in the minutes.
Yes.
That you approved.
Old Business, do we have any Old Business? I have an Old Business.
All right, Mr. LaFever, the Old Business.
The, the consoles and laptop stations here on the dais, is there any progress on that question?
To be totally honest, no. Nate Sturgis is our IT guru.
Okay.
He's been a little busy.
Okay, yeah.
But we know it needs to occur.
Okay.
I'm kind of content with my own laptop for the record, so if there's flexibility where we don't necessarily need to have a console here, I kind of like, I use my laptop the, the day or two before the meeting, get all the files pulled up and then show up to the meeting with everything set up.
The theory we're going to try to do is to have the stations, the laptops at each station, including the planning commission, so that all you have to do is log in and everything you have is there. But you're, if you, that's how you handle it. You can certainly just put it to the side.
As long as I got room, whatever we do, I just like, I like using my own laptop. It's a personal preference.
Yep.
Just one quick question. On the fence, security fence out here, how much is that going to cost? Do we have an estimate of that cost?
Perry was, was doing some creative financing. I'm not sure where he stands with that at this point.
So we don't know?
It's in our budget for forty-five thousand.
Okay, wow, okay.
I do believe that I, I can come well under that. I, I've been looking at some, some other options as far as companies to provide this and, and how we can get this done under the bidding requirements. But I'm hoping within the next two weeks, I should, I should actually have a number, so.
And, and is this a security fence that we're putting in? Or is it like an aluminum fence that we would, you would use on a residential property?
Go ahead, Perry.
Oh, basically, it's a six-foot industrial, not industrial, but a commercial aluminum grade. Yeah, I believe it has two and a half inch main pickets and like two-inch regular pickets. And there's some design on the top of them. You, you'll have a choice of a couple different looking things, but it'll just be basically a black commercial aluminum fence.
Okay, so. All right. So it's not heavy duty and we're not going to, and we're not going to have a gate?
No, it's really just to, to mark the boundaries. So if, if the police department has defend themselves in place, there is boundaries. We can certainly pull trucks across the entrances, but there was no gates planned.
Any other questions?
All right, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at eight forty-two PM. Have a good one.
The fire, Andy, if you could say real quick. We had a fire commission. And it was kind of, it would be a little bit of an ambush for East Hemfield.
Yeah.
Diane, can you turn this off?
Yeah.
What happened is Tammy Mosman's not being kept.